I'm not really ahead of it, but you know, another set of eyes.
Well, I'm happy to listen to my presentation.
That's true. How are you?
It's in my case, I'm sitting on the balcony.
It was just a little more than just speaking.
Um.
Ah.
Father, we thank you right now for this hour. We thank you for this hour. We bless your name because your name worthy to be blessed. Father, we as commissioners can do the business of this hearing. We ask your blessing upon us now. All of these that are here, hearing and support, thank you for them too. And we bless your whole name. Thank you, Father, for your goodness and your mercy again. We bless your name, Father, and we pray for countries that are in war. We pray for this country right now, Father, for what is going through. And we bless you again. Help us, Father, if only you can do and you will do. And we thank you for what you're going to do in advance. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Let's lead you through the life of the United States of America and to the Republic with its hands, one nation under God, in the physical, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting this Monday, September 16th, 2024, 5:01 PM. This is our first public hearing for fiscal year 2425. We have a conference line set up. Number is 1917-900-1022. Access code 32347-POW. This is not a toll-free number, and you may be subject to long-distance charges according to your long-distance plan. When the chairperson opens the meeting for public comment, please follow the below instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial star five. The moderator will unmute your lines at your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comment. Commenting may only speak one time per each agenda item. We will move. We'll need approval of the agenda.
I know.
We have a question to approve the agenda in a second. Thank you, Father.
All right.
Item three, the board to hold the first of two public hearings on the tentative mileage for fiscal year 2024, 2025, set for this meeting at 5:01 PM. A tentative adopt mileage for fiscal year 2425. B tentative adopt mileage for 2425.
All right, so this, you know, it's been previously advertised in the newspaper.
It will be advertised Friday.
It will be advertised Friday. But this meeting has been advertised too.
On the tram notices.
Right, on the tram notices. So this one's advertised on tram notices for the first public hearing at 5:01 today. So Danielle's going to go through the powerpoint summary of the budget.
Sorry. So tonight, the board needs to adopt the proposed mileage and the proposed budget as tentative. Then the final hearing is next Monday. As a refresher of what was discussed in budget workshops, we will start with the preliminary certified values received from the property appraiser for the year 2024. The general fund, the gross taxable value is $1,960 million. The certified value for 2023 was $1,966 million. This is a gross taxable value decrease of $5,822,000, which is 0.3% decrease. For the MSTU, the unincorporated area, the preliminary gross taxable value for 2024 is $1,640 million. The certified value for 2023 was $1,655 million, which is a gross taxable decrease of $14,967,000, which is a 0.9% decrease. This shows the proposed mileage rate compared to the rollback rate. The board elected to adopt the proposed mileage rate, which is the same mileage rate as the current year in the general fund and the MSTU, which brings in a decrease of revenue. The current mileage rate is 7.2426 miles for the general fund and 1.2250 miles for the MSTU, for a total of 8.4676 miles. The rollback rate is the mileage rate that would generate the same amount of abhorrent tax revenue as the prior year based on the current year gross taxable values. As a result of the decrease in gross taxable values for 2024, the rollback rate would represent a mileage rate increase. If the board would have chosen to go with the rollback rate, we would have experienced a revenue increase for next year because the values decreased. And per DOR, I have to let you know that the aggregate mileage rate is 8.2677. The aggregate rollback rate is 8.3852. The aggregate mileage rate is lower than the aggregate rollback rate by 1.4%. Based on the 2024 preliminary values, countywide, by keeping the mileage rate the same, the revenue generated will be $14,203,300. And the MSTU fund, based on the 2024 preliminary values and keeping the mileage rate the same, the revenue generated will be $2,909,030. In total, by keeping the proposed mileage rates the same, it will generate $16,210,233, which is a decrease of $60,504. And this is an overall of the entire budget. It's revised based on the changes made during budget workshops. And one change that was made after, the total budget request is $100,797,12. It is an increase from our current fiscal year by 20 million. And when I say current fiscal year, it's what was approved at 10/1 of '23, not the actual amended budget since then. So a really quick overview. The general fund has an increase of 10.7 million. This increase is grants. It includes the 50 cent raise, operations and capital transfers to CO, to the constitutional officers, as well as the increase in reserve. The airport fund has an increase of 1.3 million, and that is due to grants, airport capital requests, FEMA land lease, and an FAA land agreement. That was added. Roman Bridge and the MSTU both show a decrease, even though there is an actual increase, and that's because of capital requests. So the capital request for fiscal year '24 was more than what it's going to be in '25, so it makes the budget go down, even though personal services and operations is more. And for the scuff and scrap and paving funds, there is an increase of 7.3 million in those grant funds. And 4%, 33% of the budget is federal and state grants. 12% of the budget is transfers to constitutional officers. 23% of the budget is reserves. And 30% of the budget funds county departments and outside entities.
You repeat that for me, please.
All of it or the last one? So 33% of the total budget is federal and state grants.
Yes.
12% of the total budget is transfers to constitutional officers. 23% of the total budget is reserves. And 30% is funding for county departments and outside entities. And when I say outside entities, I mean like the state attorney, public defender, guardian alightum, the health department, stuff like that.
Danielle, does that include our mandate?
Yes.
Which was that increase?
It was increased to, do you remember?
Um.
Over. Was it? How was that? It increased 29%. So it ended up being a little over $90,000.
Increase.
Yes. And that's state mandated. We have to pay that. So as a quick review, the changes that were discussed and made from budget workshops, the dollar was changed to 50 cent for all county employees and constitutional officers, which reduced the total budget by $343,000. $46,000 was added to the supervisor of elections for maintenance of equipment. 20% allocation for the sheriff and DMH of the small county surtax. And they must present a capital plan during next year's budget. And $30,000 was added to the senior citizens center, and they must provide a financial statement. And then we have one additional change after the workshop, and that is an additional transfer from the general fund to the airport fund for an FAA land settlement agreement from the 2018 to TCDA agreement on the lands. And that's something that the FAA required. And so Melody sent that in, and we have to add, we have to, for the agreement. And that amount was $34,971. After the changes, the general fund had an excess of $391,000, which was placed in reserves for capital projects to balance the budget. MSTU had an excess of $58,601, which was also placed in reserves to balance. And then this is the ad that we have to put into the payphone Friday. Just so everybody has it. And then this is also, the notice of the budget hearing also goes with the budget summary ad. And we only have to advertise the notice of budget hearing this year because it's not a tax increase.
Any questions?
I want to add that this doesn't include any mileage levy for debt services fund because we don't have any debt service. So that's zero. So that's not part of the budget because we don't have it. So just wanted to mention that. So I guess we just need to open up for public comment.
Do you allow, let the board, do you know, for any public comment?
I don't know.
Here, come on, here.
Cecile Hanks, 102, 115. And I realize we're coming in daylight. The dog were short in this process, but our week just got organized in the last couple of weeks. I'm representing the Taylor County Animal Welfare Group. It was a meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we're here to ask for a little extra funding for the animal shelter. And on behalf of the animal welfare of this county and for the employees that work at the animal shelter, we have a few items we'd like to submit for your consideration. And one of them is to hire another full-time employee at the animal shelter. There's a Florida statute that says that you have to have access to the animal shelter at least one day a week after hours, like for people to pick up animals, and one day on the weekend. Currently, we're not able to do that with the staffing that we have. So it seems reasonable and feasible to either hire one more full-time staff member or maybe two part-time that could split up that responsibility. Also, even as recently as this weekend, we've had outages with staff employees creating situation at the animal shelter that are untenable. Animals in their own feces and discovery of dead chickens in their kennel sort of came to the front this week. But anyway, regardless of that, extra staffing would be very beneficial at this point. You know, to cover loose hours and to cover outages when there are family emergencies, vacations, illness, that sort of stuff. And we're looking at $27,000 or so for a full-time employee. Expansion of the facility is really an important piece of this also. We'd like to see the facility expanded. We don't have figures for you right now, but I do have some folks that can come up with some data by the next budget meeting to submit to you on the expansion of the facility. That would upgrade the electrical as well and upgrade the drainage in the kennels. Some of the kennels apparently do not drain well when they're sprayed down. And also installing climate control. You know, we've had like the hottest summer in history, you know, this past summer. And we need some AC and electrical upgrades for that facility. One of the, an easy item is a commercial washer, or at least one, maybe two commercial washers because the kind of materials that are going into the washer crap it out immediately. So you need something with commercial capabilities. And we'd also like to add some outdoor kennels that would allow prospective adopters to interact with the animals. And we understand you can get those for about $400 per kennel to do that. And then also, we'd like to see some money set aside in the budget for animal control for continuing education for the staff to either go on field trips and go look at other facilities, see what's working, what's not working, if there are any kind of state-run trainings, you know, to offer to send, you know, or enrich our top two votes with animal controls to go so that they, and then we're staying on top of Florida statutes and best management practices. And from right now, that's what we have. And I appreciate that you'd allow me to speak to you tonight. And I hope you will take these matters into consideration. And we will come back with some money figures if you need it. I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I want to mention that in this report for tonight, in the general fund, we have an excess of $391,000, which was placed in reserve for capital projects. So perhaps some of this money could be put toward what they're asking. I did go down for a visit at the animal shelter, and I concur with what she and others are saying. As I walked in the door, I had to wade through water, for one thing. And there were other issues too. But I think this is something that we need to take under consideration. And I also think, Cecile, if you look at the bigger picture, that it might be something to look into for a new animal shelter. And you know, there's places that we could go. We could ask for grants, and we could ask for legislative appropriations. The place is really old. It has a lot of needs. And so if we could just do something now to take care of some of the issues that you brought up and look at the broader picture and try to construct a new animal shelter. We have to select.
I just want to be on record and say I concur with what you're saying. And that would be the ideal thing is to have a new updated facility with, you know, everything that's up to spec as much as possible with animal shelter compliance and such.
All right. I just have a few questions. Do we have any kind of indications that are saying that we're outside of state statute of compliance in respect to that?
I'm not sure about the after-hours. I mean, we have an employee there seven days a week. Now evenings, we do not have scheduled for people whom would like to adopt, so I'll have to check into that. But we do have someone there cleaning on the weekends, not keeping it open for adoption, so. So I'll have to, I'll have to check that.
Right. But as far as our staff, they're up to speed, I suppose, as far as training and all those requirements?
Well, they have not received euthanasia training as of yet, but, or chemical capture. But they are certified animal control officers, and they're not allowed to write citations until they receive that certification. There are additional, you know, there are additional classes, obviously, that they could go to. There's cruelty investigators, there's, you know, chemical capture, there's euthanasia. So there are additional levels that they could go through if need be.
I'm going to have to finish up the budget session here. Finish it up. Yeah, then we, you know, I think we probably have some other meetings coming down the clock that are probably to discuss animal control. But I think we're here talking about the budget session in front of us. But we need to just move forward with that.
So yeah, I mean, you can always make a budget amendment later and move that money from reserve to animal. If that's what, you know, if you wanted to do, you don't have to do that tonight. You can do that at a later time if you wanted to.
Just as a note, though, animal control has to come out of MSTU, not the general fund. Again, animal control has to come out of MSTU, not the general fund because the city pays for some of animal control. So animal control was vested in the MSTU fund, so we can't use general fund reserves.
Well, I think we need to take a deeper dive into that and just take, hey, this, this, this going on. Let's dive into it a little deeper. Maybe we'll get a chance to look at it before we just go throw money at it. An argument that we really know we're throwing money at until we really do our homework.
I don't have any reason to disbelieve what the people are coming before us saying. I paid a visit there. I don't know if you've been down there or not.
I might say I don't believe anything they say, but I mean, I don't know. I think we have new staff to do an investigation. I don't know, $27,000 is a number of mine. I don't, I don't know where that comes from. So I think.
Like $27,000 is minimum wage?
I think part of the caution would be that's a recurrent cost. It wouldn't be a one-time expense.
Well, and you have to.
I agree with you, Chairman. I think we need more information so that we can look into the occurrence.
Not to just, even at $15 an hour, I think the minimum for a full-time person would be closer to $31,000. And then you have your health insurance and your.
There's just as much more you got.
They'd probably be closer to top out of 50 for a full-time person.
Just $15 an hour minimum wage. I would say we need to, before we go to throw money at it, we need to know exactly what we're paying for and what we're going to get out of it. I mean, makes a lot more sense for me.
I'm not against, you know, looking into what it's going to cost us and taking into consideration what's been said to us and look at those laws statute that she discussed that says that you have to have this, that, and the other and then see if we need to come into compliance with that. And then just in general, the place is really old, and it looks like it needs a lot. Go take a look at it.
I think we got to be coming up to discuss animal control, I guess, so. That worked out.
That'd be after next Monday, though. What's the date that we'll approve the budget?
I think we don't have to put it, don't, that's a.
So you're approving the budget next Monday?
Next Monday will be the final hearing and will, a final vote.
All right, you're doing tentative budget tonight, the final budget Monday. Now, you can make changes before you do that. But I think we're not talking about anything that's going to affect a mileage rate or the total budget. So that can be done after the final budget's approved later if you're just moving it from one place to another.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. I just know that there's times that, you know, with something to fall out. Well, it wasn't, we just went through the budget and it wasn't in the budget. So I don't have a problem with that to discuss it more in depth after the budget and just to see, you know, where we are.
Yeah. Let me say this. I've been hearing rumors about kennel and all of that. What dogs do we own? Is that our dog? Or neighbor's dog? Who's dog? Cats and chickens and stuff.
I mean, once we take possession of them, they're our responsibility, but they're.
How do we get possession of them? Somebody call and say something.
They could be running at large. They could be aggressive. They could be loose. They could be owner surrenders. And the owner surrenders are a substantial.
Let me tell you what I've been here.
Yes, sir.
I've been here and we got 700 people out of the job. And we only give TCDA, see TCDA, about $150,000 to find. They haven't used the 150. And 175, I think, with Laura Lavella from the Department of Commerce. And we are talking about that. Now, we got the 700 people out of the job. I don't know who calls you up. It looked like a person, we don't even check the people under dogs. We need to check them people too. Like they need to be under the department or the sheriff or somebody to be checking them dogs. Now, I don't think we've got dogs that's dear to them. And I was raised up, 12 boys. And I was raised up, twelve boys, and we had two dogs. You know, they probably slept with them, probably shouldn't have been there. But anyway, when I go to hear the figures, money that's rolled out and we say we can't do no more for TCDA, food, traffic, people hurt, then I hear the people talking about the folks sleeping on the street, the homeless shelter. Oh, when the homeless shelter come, and those are humans, those are not dogs, we turn their fear to all of this. I think while we're talking about the dog, we need to talk about humans. We need to talk about serbs, we need to talk about jobs.
That's right.
Yeah, we need to talk about all of it.
That's right.
So I think that workshop might be, we're going to discuss all this stuff.
Oh, absolutely. I figured more, I wasn't prepared to talk about any of this like this tonight, so.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have a big comment on that tonight.
And I like it, and Commissioner Dens said, yeah, we have a lot of needs countywide, and we have a broad range of needs. And I understand our priority is to try to find jobs, and I think we're on a good road to doing that. We do have homeless people. But you have got a large section of the people that really care about the welfare and the treatment of animals too. So, you know, we have a lot of needs that we need to address. I agree with you.
We need to, on this tentative adopt in the.
Yeah, there's no more public, I mean, if you heard everything from the public.
No, I'm going to follow Nancy.
So what we'll need then is a motion to adopt a tentative millage rate of 7.2426 mills for the countywide valuation to be used in the mill.
Question? Yeah, I hear they're pushing back Commissioner Dens to adopt the millage, general millage of 7.2426. We have a second.
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Fiegel, all in favor?
Aye.
Now.
So if we, if we can do a roll call vote on that, so Commissioner English?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody? Commissioner Moody, yes, yeah. Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiegel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dens.
Yes.
All right, and so the next one would be, oh, I'm sorry, it's part of that, isn't it? So a motion to, so we need a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.2250 mills on the unincorporated property valuation to be used in the MSTU fund.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fiegel to adopt the tentative millage rate for MSTU at 1.2250. We have a second.
I'm saying it by Commissioner Dens.
All right, and I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner English?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Fiegel?
Yes.
And Dens?
Yeah.
The next one, I'll take a different guess than part of that same, is to, for the board to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year 23, 24, aggregating and totaling the amount of $100,797,12.
All right. We need a motion to adopt the tentative budget of a, motion by Commissioner Dens to adopt tentative budget of $100,797,12. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Thinking by Commissioner Moody, all in favor?
I'll do a, all right, so I'll do another roll call. Commissioner English?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody? Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiegel?
No.
And Commissioner Dens?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
I think you announced it as 23, 24.
Okay, 24, 25.
We are.
It is the 24, 25 tentative budget. So, and also, the second and final public hearing will be for the 24, 25 budget will be held next Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at 5:01 PM. And the required notices require the second and final public hearing will be advertised in the paper newspaper issue on Friday, September 20th, 2024. That's all we got.
Another question to discuss from the discussion, a little bit, a motion to adjourn. You got a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion and a second, is there, all in favor? All right. We'll take a couple of minutes now before we start next meeting.